Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for May 23rd, 2022. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Judy Hettinson?
Here.
Scott Ohm?
Here.
Rachel Holtein?
She, uh, she said that she would, might be coming a little bit late tonight, so we may expect her.
Thanks, sir. Janice Hoppy?
I believe she was going to be ill tonight.
Okay. Amanda Weaver?
Here.
Corey Stites?
Present.
Leah Dozeman?
Here.
Val Nazir Beck?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, councillors, in your packet you have the study session notes from December 6th of last year, 2021. There was one correction in there. Uh, are there any further corrections? If not, we'll let the minutes stand as corrected. So, so ordered. And without, are there any changes to the agenda? None noted and unordered. Thank you. We have some proclamations at the podium. The proclamation tonight in support of LGBTQ Pride Month, and that's going to be accepted by Jenny Snell. Ms. Snell, would you please come on up? How are you doing?
Great.
Nice to see you. This is a proclamation for LGBTQ Pride Month, June 2022. Whereas the city of Wheat Ridge cherishes the value and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom, and whereas, all are welcome in the city of Wheat Ridge to live, work, and play, and every family deserves a place to call home where they feel safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas, the city denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas, Pride Month began on June 28th, 1969, on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City after LGBTQ+ and allied friends rose up and fought against the constant police harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas, we appreciate the cultural, civic, economic contributions of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus community which strengthens our social welfare. And whereas, it is imperative that every person in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feels valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. And whereas, despite being marginalized, LGBTQ plus people continue to celebrate authenticity, acceptance, and love. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, declare the month of June 2022 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Proclamation, would you like to say a word to?
Okay. Thank you so much. All right, I gotta wear these fun things. Thank you, Mayor Starker and city council members. I'm happy to be here to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Wheat Ridge LGBTQ community. In a time of so much unjustified prejudice, cruelty, and violence against folks who are literally just trying to live their lives, this proclamation is a bright spot. I'd also like to think of it as a great reminder for us as a community to try and do just a little bit more. Pride is celebrated in June as a remembrance of the Stonewall riot that occurred at the Stonewall Inn in Greenwich Village, and the courageous folks who decided to fight back against the police during a raid for just trying to enjoy an evening out without fear or judgment. The LGBTQ community has been tirelessly fighting for equality, and proclamations like these are a great reminder for all of us. I once again commend the city for forming our Race and Equity Task Force and know that our work is a sh- is shining a light on inequities in our community. Thank you for recognizing the value of this important work. I'd like to close with an excerpt from President Obama's Pride Month proclamation in 2016. There remains much work to do to extend the promise of our community or of our country to every American, but because of the acts of cour- of courage of the millions who came out and spoke out to demand justice and of those who quietly toiled and pushed for progress, our nation has made great strides in recognizing what these brave individuals long knew to be true in their hearts, that love is love and that no person should be judged by anything but the contents of their character. And with that, I'd like to wish you all a very happy Pride. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is, uh, declaring, uh, June Men's Health Month, and we have with us Calvin Beasley tonight, and, uh, as a strong supporter of the city of Wheat Ridge Healthy Eating and Active Living Initiatives and a leader in the healthcare industry, uh, Mr. Beasley joins us as a, uh, leader in the Lutheran Medical Center, Vice President of Integrative Health Services. Is he joining us online?
Um, yes, Ms., uh, yes, Ms. Beasley's up there on the screen.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm trying to get him on the actual screen, sorry.
Thanks, thanks, uh, thanks for having me. Um, and thank you for raising, uh, Men's Health Awareness Month.
Okay.
Um, I just, can you hear me?
Yes, I tell you what, let me wait, and if you'd hang on just a minute, I'll read the proclamation, and then we'll have a word or two from you.
Sounds great.
Thanks so much. Whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women, with Native American and African Amer- African American men having the lowest life expectancy. And whereas, educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of healthy lifestyles and early detection of male health problems will result in reducing rates of mortality from disease. And whereas, men who are educated about the value that preventive healthcare can play in prolonging their lifespan and their role as productive family members will be more likely to participate in health screenings. And whereas, fathers who maintain a healthy lifestyle are role models for their children and have happier, healthier children. And whereas, the Men's Health Network worked with Congress to develop a national men's health awareness period as a special campaign to help educate men, boys, and their families about the importance of positive health attitudes and preventive health practices. And whereas, the Men's Health Month website has been established at Men'sHealthMonth.org and features resources, proclamations, and information about awareness events and activities, including "Wear Blue for Men's Health." And whereas, the residents of Wheat Ridge are encouraged to increase awareness of the importance of a happy lifestyle, regular exercise, and regular checkups. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, do hereby declare June 22nd as Men's Health Month and encourage residents of Wheat Ridge to pursue preventive health practices and early detection efforts dated this 23rd day of May. So, Mr. Beasley, thank you for being here virtually. I'm going to yield the screen to you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Starker. Really appreciate the time. I think we can all, um, know or have been impacted by someone in our family or friends or extended families, um, with, uh, males in their, that have not actively engaged with their physician partners to get those, um, annual checkups. I can speak for myself, um, you know, and historically I've not done a good job at that, and that's extremely important. Um, and so I've made it a point in my life, uh, to start doing that on a regular basis. And I just think it's extremely easy for us to say, oh, I, I can put this off or later, or I could do this another time. And just coming from my perspective, you know, I just need to be more actively engaged in early awareness. And so I hope that everybody, um, encourages those males that are in their, um, extended families or, um, anybody that they know that they think that, you know, maybe they should, uh, get out there and get that checkup. It's extremely catch, uh, critical to catch this stuff as early as possible. So, I, I just want to thank the committee for really, you know, emphasizing this point. And, um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you for being here. Thank you for what you do for men's health and the health of their families. I, uh, I'm a man and I need that, that prompting myself. So, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation is in support of National Safety Month, and, uh, I'm hoping we have Bill, uh, Toco, our city, uh, Wheat Ridge mechanic and chair of the Wheat Ridge Employee Safety Committee with us. I'm going to check with.
We do, Mayor, and he's just joining on camera.
Okay, Bill, thank you very much for being here. So, let me read this proclamation. We'll give you a, a minute or two to make a, make a statement. So, this is a proclamation for National Safety Month, June 2022. Whereas National Safety Month focuses on reducing the leading causes of injury and death at work, on the roads and in our homes and communities, drawing attention to safe practices that will decrease the likelihood of accidents. And whereas, all community members deserve to live in communities that promote safe and healthy living environments. And whereas, safe communities require the cooperation of all levels of government, business and industry employees, as well as the general public. And whereas, through the support and observance of National Safety Month each year, employers are helping to reverse an increase in accidental injuries and death in the workplace. And whereas, the city supports safety efforts and has taken a proactive stance in providing a safe and healthy work environment for its employees by supporting the BE SAFE Safety Committee. And whereas, the city works to prevent accidental injuries by educating employees about safe and healthy practices in the workplace through training and encouragement. And whereas, the beginning of the summer season, traditionally a time of increased accidents and injuries, it is an appropriate time to focus attention on risk management and prevention. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the city council, formally designate the month of May, of June 2022 as National Safety Month and urge all community members and employees to establish and maintain safe practices in their homes, workplaces, and our community, dated this 23rd day of May, 2022. Bill, I'm gonna yield the, uh, yield the microphone to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Starker. I am honored to accept this Safety Month proclamation on behalf of the city's safety committee. I'd like to tell you a minute, a little bit about our safety committee and safety at Wheat Ridge. The committee is comprised of 11 volunteer employees that represent the city's various departments. Members of the committee are responsible for a variety of duties such as maintaining their department's audit logbook for SERSA's Annual Loss Control Standards Audit, conducting safety training based on their department's needs, and attending our monthly meetings. During our monthly meetings, the members review redacted insurance claims to determine root cause, address safety issues and concerns, and plan safety-related events or training that will be presented to the city's employees. Additionally, the committee created the BE SAFE program. This program is an incentive program that rewards employees with Wow Bucks for being accident-free for a year, attending safety training or certification classes, and submitting safety suggestions to the committee. The Wow Bucks that employees earn from the incentive program can be used to purchase a variety of goods through the city's Give-A-Wow program. The safety committee is dedicated to building a safety culture in our workforce by providing comprehensive safety training to all of our employees. We want our employees to stay safe and take pride in their learning so that they may return home at the end of their shift to their loved ones just as they began it. Thank you.
Bill, thank you very much for being with us tonight, and, and please extend our thanks to the safety committee for the great work they do to keep our employees and their families safe. We appreciate it.
I will. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is, um, declaring June 3rd, 2022 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and I'd like to invite Juniper Loomis to come forward, if you would please, and accept the, the proclamation, and it's great to have you with us tonight. Whereas every day, more than 110 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 200 who are shot and wounded, and on average, there are nearly 16,000 gun homicides in America every year. And whereas, the Second Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America states that, quote, "A well-regulated militia, being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of a people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." And whereas, implicit in this right to bear arms is the obligation to store and use those arms in a safe and legal manner, and to be educated and trained in the safe handling and proper operations of guns. And whereas, gun violence has proliferated throughout our nation with mass shootings of innocent victims occurring on an all-too-frequent basis in cities such as Buffalo and Boulder, in schools such as Columbine and Sandy Hook, and against police officers such as Officer Beasley in Arvada, Colorado. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic has exacerbated gun violence, as evidenced by increased gun sales and increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines. And whereas, as an outgrowth of the tragic shooting death of 15-year-old Haida Pendleton in 2013, on June 3rd, 2022, to recognize her 25th birthday, people across this nation will wear orange, a color worn by hunters in the field to announce themselves to other hunters and which symbolizes safety and the value of human life. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, declare June 3, 2020 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day and urge citizens to work in their local communities to promote the safe, legal, storage, and use of guns and support efforts to decrease gun violence throughout our nation, dated this 23rd day of May, 2022.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, um, Mayor Starker, and I'd like to thank Valerie Nazir Beck for inviting me tonight. Um, my name's Juniper Loomis. Um, I'd just like to thank the city council for passing this proclamation. Um, and by marking June 3rd as National Gun Violence Prevention Day, Wheat Ridge is acknowledging that epidemic of gun violence in our country and in our state mustn't become the new normal. While attending school at CU Boulder, I also worked a part-time job at King Supers near my house. Sadly, just over a year ago, on March 22nd of 2021, 10 people were murdered in that King Supers. Three of my coworkers were killed that day, two of whom I would consider my friends. Ricky Olds I had spoken to the day before when I had visited the King Supers to shop. In the aftermath of this shooting, I coed by advocating for gun safety reform in the Colorado General Assembly. I didn't want the death and violence to be for nothing, and although no one bill or reform will fix the gun violence rampant in our country, gradual progress is nonetheless still progress. In addition to this proclamation, I would urge Wheat Ridge's city council to take advantage of the repeal of Colorado's preemption law to pass stricter gun legislation such as an assault weapons ban at the local level. The first step in fixing a problem is acknowledging that there is one. I hope other cities, states, and our federal government falls and follow in Wheat Ridge's footsteps in acknowledging the devastating effects that gun violence has in our communities. Thank you to the Wheat Ridge City Council for passing this important proclamation, raising awareness of this serious and deadly issue.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go to our, our public's right to speak. During this, uh, portion of our, um, meeting, uh, members of the public may come and speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. Uh, when I, uh, I have a sign-up sheet here, and when I call your name, if you would please come to the podium and give us your first name and your last name, if you would please spell your last name, and give us your address. Uh, you'll be, um, you'll have three minutes to speak. The, um, clerk will turn the lighting buttons on, and the green one comes on first and stays about 30 second, or, when there's 30 seconds left, it'll start to flash, and the orange one comes on, it's about 15 seconds left, and, uh, when the red one comes on, your time is, uh, completed, and if you would, wrap up your remarks. So, our first speaker signed up is Jenny Snell.
Good evening. That was my mistake. I was thinking I needed to sign in for the proclamation.
Okay.
Thank you. Everyone's doing a great job. Have a good night.
Very good. Great to have you with us tonight. So, I don't have anyone else signed up to speak tonight, but, uh, if you are here in, uh, in council chambers and would like to speak, now is the time to come to the podium. We will recognize you, and I will ask Ms. Shek, if you are, if you are, uh, on the, uh, on the Zoom format, if you wish to speak, you may raise your hand, and we will bring you into the meeting. And Ms. Shek, has anyone raised their hand to speak? Okay, then we will, um, move past our public's right to speak. That will bring us to our item number one, and, uh, councillor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent Agenda Item 1A, Resolution Number 25-2022, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2022 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $50,000 for technology to support telework. At issue, per city council's direction, the city will use increased general fund reserves from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funding to purchase additional computers and ancillary equipment to support telework. Consent Agenda Item 1B, motion to award a contract to Hallmark Incorporated of Denver, Colorado for the 2022 Bridge Repair Project on West 44th Avenue over Clear Creek and approve subsequent payments in the amount of $566,961 with a contingency amount of $28,348.05 for a total not to exceed amount of $595,309.05. Consent Agenda Item 1C, motion to approve payment to Bank of Oklahoma for 2022 principal and interest payments in the amount of $3,498,800 for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado Sales and Use Tax Revenue Bond Series 2, 2017A. Uh, this issue, on May 2nd, 2017, the city closed on Series 2017A Sales and Use Tax Revenue Bonds in the par amount of $30,595,000 with a net premium of $2,687,079 for a total of $33,282,790. The city's first interest payment for 2022 is due June 1st in the amount of $389,400, and the principal and second interest payment is due December 1st in the amount of $3,109,400. Funds to cover the 2022 payments are budgeted in the 2022 II E Bond Fund Budget.
Thank you very much. This is, uh, the consent agenda items for the city in our meeting tonight. May I have a motion on Agenda Items 1A, B, and C?
I move to approve consent agenda items 1A through 1C.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. And for the record, I will note that our councillor Holtein has joined our meeting. We will, uh, go to Agenda Item Number Two. Uh, councillor Holtein, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 6, 2022, An Ordnance Amending Article 8 of Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws to update the city's floodplain maps and make conforming amendments. At issue, the floodplain maps for Jefferson County have been revised to include updates to the floodplain boundaries within three watersheds. The only watershed within the Wheat Ridge city limits is for a tributary to Sloane's Lake. Adoption of the most current floodplain maps is required by the National Flood Insurance Program. In addition, staff is seeking to make other minor changes to the city's floodplain regulations to add a couple of necessary definitions and clarify the adoption of the official floodplain maps.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. Our city manager, Mr. Goff, is not with us tonight, but we have, uh, Mr. Johnstone. So, Mr. Johnstone?
Yeah, good evening. We have Mark Westberg, uh, city's floodplain administrator here to make a presentation.
Okay, Mr. Westberg.
Thank you. Um, tonight we're gonna talk about, it talks a lot about Sloane's Lake 'cause as, as, um, councillor member Holtein mentioned, um, that's the only one that's changed within this revised deferment that we're doing tonight. Um, the original mapping was done back in 1977. As you can imagine, a lot's changed in 45 years, not just in the watershed, but, but in just about everything related to how we map floodplains. So, um, the project sponsors were several cities, the town of Edgewater and the Mile High Flood District. Um, they're a big fan, I'm a big fan of the Mile High Flood District. I'm mayor, sits on their board, and they do a great job of taking care of all of us and making my job as a floodplain administrator a whole lot easier. Um, we started working on the FAD update. FAD is our local floodplain map, stands for Flood Hazard Area Delineation. I'm not sure who came up with that back in the day, but somebody did. Um, we updated the hydrology, the hydraulics, and with those two bits of information, we updated the mapping. Um, in Wheat Ridge, there wasn't a lot of change in the mapping, um, for the, the actual floodplain, uh, along 26th Avenue. Um, in addition, we also look at any additional improvements can be done. We didn't find any Wheat Ridge that needed to be done along that watershed, largely due to the fact that from the 1977 plan, we had done all those master plan improvements. So, um, we were pretty well caught up on that. Um, that floodplain, when it was completed and approved, was adopted as a local flood hazard area in 2019 by city council. This is a picture of the Sloane's Lake, um, watershed starting at the South Plate on the right and then ending up in Crown Hill Cemetery on the left. This is the part- This is the part that's in Wheat Ridge, and just for clarification, the little arrow is pointing where City Hall is, where we are all sitting tonight. So it gives you an idea of we're mostly talking about east of here and basically south of 32nd Avenue. So the original mapping for all three watersheds that we have in the city, we're all done in the 70s with Sloane's Lake being, as I said, done in 1977. Our previous firm map, the Flood Insurance Rate Map, was adopted by FEMA in 2003, and that basically updated the mapping from Sloane's from Lena Gulch and Clear Creek. And then our current map that we have today is in 2014, it was adopted it was adopted by City Council and became effective on that date. And that, again, only updated Lena Gulch and Clear Creek. So Sloane's Lake was kind of due. This is a map showing all of our various floodplains. The white area is the City of Wheat Ridge. The floodplain that runs across the middle of the of the city is the Clear Creek floodplain, and that's a special flood hazard area, as is the Lena Gulch, and those are both regulated, federally regulated floodplains. For Sloane's Lake, we have a little piece of special flood hazard area that runs along basically 26th Avenue and reaches into some people's yards. It doesn't pack any buildings for us there. And then we have two places. My mouth went away. Here and here, where we have two tributaries to that Sloane's Lake Special Flood Hazard Area that we adopted back in 2019 as local flood hazard areas. I can't believe it's been three years since we adopted those things as local areas, but it has. So we received what's called a letter of final determination from FEMA on February 2 of 2022, telling us the map has been revised, and it's going to be effective on August 2, 2022. What they've done is there are three different watersheds. Two of those are, I think, one's in Lakewood, one's in unincorporated Jefferson County. They're also being updated. So they just adopted a whole new digital firm. So that we call it the D firm now because it's all digital, which makes my job a whole lot easier. We had a public meeting on March 30 in conjunction with our annual floodplain meeting. We went to Planning Commission back in April, and we were at City Council two weeks ago for first reading, and we're here tonight for second reading. And I'm just available for any questions that you all might have.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to invite the any questions or or discussion on this from members of the public. I do not have anyone signed up to speak, but if you are here in council chambers and would like to speak on item number two, now is your opportunity. If you'd please come to the podium, and I'll ask if we have anyone online raising their hand. We don't, so we will move past our our public questioning and go to questions of council. Any questions on council before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? I'm going to close the public hearing, and Counselor Hulteen, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 6, 2022, An Ordnance Amending Article 8 of Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws to update the city's floodplain maps and to make conforming amendments on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days, take effect 15 days final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Weaver. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We will go to Agenda Item Number Three. Mr. Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 04-2022, An Ordnance Approving the Rezoning of Property Located at 4501 Wadsworth Boulevard for Restricted Commercial to Mixed-Use Neighborhood, MUN Case Number WZ-22-02. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from restricted commercial to mixed-use neighborhood for property located at 4501 Wadsworth Boulevard. The zone change will result in a zoning that more accurately reflects surrounding conditions and other nearby zoning designations.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. If you intend to speak on this item, by speaking, you agree to tell the truth as you understand it. And thank you. Let's see. Mr. Johnstone, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Scott Koller, Senior Planner with Community Development, is here this evening.
Mr. Koller.
Good evening. Presenting Case Number WZ-2202, a request for approval of a zone change from restricted commercial to mixed-use neighborhood at 4501 Wadsworth Boulevard. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan in this presentation. Property is within the City of Wheat Ridge, and all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, City Council has jurisdiction to hear this case. The subject property is outlined here in red in the middle of the screen and is located on the west side of Wadsworth Boulevard, just north of the intersection with 45th Avenue. The area is primarily commercial in nature, with some multi-unit residential to the west, a church to the north, another church to the east, and more intensive commercial uses to the south. Property measures about 19,000 square feet in size and contains a two-story retail building from the 1960s. Property is partially impacted by the Wadsworth Improvement Project, and right-of-way has already been acquired along the front edge of the property. This is a zoning map of the area, and the property is currently zoned restricted commercial, or RC, and is outlined in red again in the middle of the map. Wadsworth, south of 44th Avenue, was legislatively rezoned by the city in 2011 to mixed-use commercial, that light blue color. Property is north of those boundaries and was not included in that legislative rezoning. Properties north of 45th Avenue and Wadsworth service a transition zone as properties gradually get smaller in size and contain a mix of zoning designations. Three properties north of 45th Avenue have already been rezoned to MUN from other designations in the past few years, including the property immediately to the north of the subject property. This is a view of the subject property looking west from Wadsworth. The purpose of the zone change is to result in a zoning that more accurately reflects surrounding conditions and other nearby zoning designations, including the few properties to the north already zoned MUN. The current RC zoning is a legacy zone district, which allows a limited range of commercial and office uses, but is limiting in terms of overall allowed uses, including retail. The MUN Zone District is intended for commercial corridors and will allow uses more consistent with those found elsewhere on the corridor north of 45th Avenue. RC was originally designed for and is often seen on smaller properties with more adjacency to low-density residential, but is very limiting in terms of allowed land uses. For example, it prohibits upholstery shops, which is one of the owner's desired users of the property. The MUN designation would allow for more flexibility for a new user of the building and will provide standards for a future development if that were to occur. The proposed MUN zoning allows residential, commercial, or a mix of the two, and the MUN district is complementary to the context of the corridor and the surrounding zoning and land uses, and provides a wider range of allowed retail uses than the existing RC zoning. The development standards are similar, with both zones allowing up to 50 feet for a commercial building, and MUN also allows residential uses limited to 35 feet in height. And this table summarizes the proposed zoning's development standards, most of which would apply if the property were to redevelop in the future. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on February 9, 2022 virtually, and we did have one person attend, and they did not have any concerns. Wheat Ridge is not a full silver city, and we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, and also completed an internal review. We did not receive any concerns or objections from those agencies. And before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days. Letters were sent to property owners and residents within a 600-foot radius, and we did not receive any comments on Wheat Ridge Speaks or by other means. And on April 7, Planning Commission recommended approval. One of the criteria used to evaluate zone change requests includes consistency with the comprehensive plan, and staff believes that the proposed MUN zoning is consistent with the policies and goals in the comprehensive plan. Being located on the Wadsworth corridor, which is a primary commercial corridor, the designation envisions a corridor with a broad mix of activities, including mixes of commercial and residential uses, and a stated goal in the comprehensive plan is specifically to promote reinvestment in property. The zone change request supports the comprehensive plan by enabling investment in the property and aligning the zoning with mixed-use zoning. We are recommending approval of the request. Based on the land use patterns on Wadsworth, the MUN Zone District in this area is more appropriate than RC in terms of allowed uses. And for that reason, the zone change should not have an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Zone change is also supported by the comprehensive plan, and City Council is the final vote on this rezoning request. That concludes my presentation, and the applicant is also here for questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I'd like to open it up for for members of the public to speak on this. I have no one signed up to speak, but if you're here in council chambers and would like to speak, now is your opportunity, and I will ask if we have anyone online raising their hand to speak, and there is no one to speak. So I will go to questions from council. Do we have questions from council before I close the public hearing? Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious if MUC was considered for the location, given that it's on Wadsworth?
North of 45th, the properties are a lot smaller and definitely narrower as well. Those are really envisioned for larger, I guess, more primary commercial sites. So Wadsworth between 38th and 44th was identified, and that's when it was rezoned in 2011.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I'm going to Counselor Nosler Beck.
Can we just talk a little bit about the property and what's going to happen to the the store that's currently there? Are they involved in this?
Sorry, the the store that's there currently?
I thought, is it the antique store? Yeah.
That would be up to the applicant, and it wouldn't be affected by this rezoning. It would be, I guess, if there's a new user, they would have to comply with the MUN zoning.
So we're just changing the zoning?
Yep.
That's it? Okay, thank you. Got it.
Okay. Any more questions before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? I'm going to close the public hearing, and Mayor Pro Tim Hulteen, or actually, Mr. Ohm is on this this item? Mr. Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 04-2022, An Ordnance Approving the Rezoning of Property Located at 4501 Wadsworth Boulevard for Restricted Commercial to Mixed-Use Neighborhood on second reading, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication for the following reasons. Number one, the Planning Commission has recommended approval of the rezoning after conducting a proper public hearing. Number two, the proposed rezoning has been reviewed by the Community Development Department, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. Number three, the proposed rezoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in Section 26-112 of the Code of Laws.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hulteen. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Oh, Counselor Nosler Beck, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just I just wanted to make a comment because this property is actually my my father's childhood home that was turned into this property, and I just think it's a real sign of the times that, you know, things are changing, and I it and it's changing fast in some cases because I didn't even know that the antique shop that was in that location had moved out. But just wanted to recognize that, you know, my family is one of the families that helped build this this community, and and things change, and that's okay. And sometimes Wadsworth becomes one of our main thoroughways, and you don't want to necessarily live there anymore, and it's a good space for hopefully some other great, great businesses to to move on in. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for showing us that that buildings have personalities, too, and they have they have history. So thank you very much. Okay, if there's no more no more discussion, we'll poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay, we will move now to our next agenda item. That is Agenda Item Number Four. Counselor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Council Bill Number 05-2022, An Ordnance Amending Section 26-615 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Small Cell CMRS Facilities. The issue is, since 2017, Colorado state law has required that local jurisdictions allow small cell facilities in all zone districts and in the right of way. Staff has processed a handful of applications since then. This ordinance is proposed to update regulations in response to recent public concerns and based on lessons learned over the last five years.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Johnstone, do we have a presentation, a staff presentation on this item?
We do, Mayor. Jerry Doll, our city attorney, is here to make a few remarks.
Okay, Mr. Doll.
Thank you very much. As was indicated in the description of the issue, this is a tune-up, really, to the city's CMRS regulations, and the CMRS are the Commercial Mobile Radio Service Regulations, so mobile mobile telephones. And the the city operates, as I think you can tell from the staff report, within a landscape of federal and state legislation that increasingly has been supportive of the the development of that industry and the proliferation of the facilities necessary to supply the service that we all use. All of us have phones with us tonight, and so we all rely upon that service and are demanding it. And at both the federal and the state level, that has resulted in legislation that constrains the the degree to which local governments can regulate the placement of these facilities. Very different than what we just saw on the rezoning case, where you really can determine locally and almost exclusively what uses can be and what locations. It's a different landscape for CMRS regulation for the good reasons, I think, that have been articulated at the federal and state level. Since 19, excuse me, 2017, the state legislature enacted a statute that furthers those restrictions and, among other things, allowed or requires that CMRS facilities are used by right, we all know what that means, in all zone districts, and are required to be available and made available in city rights of way, which is a little unusual when you think about it. That's a law requiring that a private entity have the right to use the city's right-of-way without really the payment of anything other than the permitting costs. But that was true in 2017, and it became clear that that small cells, especially the smaller facilities that that take care of the small gaps between larger facilities, were to be required to be allowed in all zone districts and in the right-of-way. City did act in 2017 to adjust its code sections to to do just that, to allow that. And we have a pattern of regulations that governs the use of both the used by right in zone districts and in the public right-of-way. This ordinance does a little bit of a tune-up to that 2017 effort. Since 2017, we've seen, the planning department tells me, we've processed seven applications and four poles have been erected, and so it really hasn't been that much of an impact. But we've learned some lessons, I think, and some issues have been brought to the city's attention. You might recall last year, there was some concern about work that was happening in the right-of-way, and was concerned that it was going to be a small cell. It actually was not that, but it heightened our interest in this. That brings me to what this ordinance does as a tune-up to the existing CMRS ordinance. Requires a building permit for that facility in addition to just a right-of-way permit because it's something to be constructed and often in public right-of-way. Written explanation to justify the location and design clarifies it's not the applicant but the city in the form of Community Development Director who makes the final decisions on height, design, and color. And especially for a small cell in a neighborhood, that's very important. We want to make sure the city has a role. The legislation, state and federal, allows this role for the city, and we certainly should take advantage of that role that we have, to the extent where we have a role. And lastly, in response to the the concerns about where the poles will land, and do they land in the front yard or in the right-of-way, but still in in my front yard view, what this ordinance does, as many other cities have done in the last few years, requires that these small cell poles only be on the property lines as extended into the right-of-way. So at least it's not in front of your house, it's on the property line that extends from your and your neighbor's property out into the right-of-way, and therefore, in the right-of-way at least, it's on basically the corner or the border of my property or your property for adjacent neighbors. In addition to that, the Planning Commission, in reviewing this ordinance, made a recommendation that you see in the staff report, and it's also reflected in the recommended approval motion, that the Planning Commission was asked, well, gee, can we just prohibit these facilities on local streets? Yes, we've got to allow them on right-of-way, but can we prohibit them on local streets? And the answer is no to that because our local streets are also right-of-way. State statute says they've got to be allowed in the right-of-way. But what we can do is the recommendation that you see in the pack But what we can do is the recommendation that you see in the packet the planning commission recommended and we wrote up, which is that if there's a small cell proposed on a local street, that we require that the applicants demonstrate why the facility has to be there rather than on a street with a different classification, meaning an arterial or something greater. And that puts the proof to them in the sense of, is this really where you have to be to be able to fill that gap? Very often, it's an engineering determination of strength of signal, et cetera, in filling these gaps. So that's my staff report, and after the public testimony, when you do get to form the motion, you'll notice that the recommended motion is to adopt the ordinance with the additional amendment recommended by staff, which is this language on the last page of the staff report, saying that if it's proposed to be on a local street, then that's this heightened justification to be reviewed by an engineer, by the city engineer, to determine if that's really true. That concludes my staff report. Happy to answer questions after any public testimony.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Doll. Before we go to questions from council, we will open this up to the public. If you would like to speak on this, now is your opportunity. I have no one signed up to speak. But we will, if you are here in council chambers, you may come to the podium and speak now, and I'll ask Ms. Scheck if we have anyone that's raised their hands to speak on this issue online.
No, Mayor. Don't believe so.
Okay. Then we will close our public comment on this item and go to questions from council. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one for Mr. Doll. So the building permit for the new pole that houses, the question is, if it was a new development that was going into the city, irregardless of these special types of features, and they wanted to put in, say, a light pole, you know, for a development, would a building permit be required?
Yes, it would.
It would?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Okay. Any additional questions before I close the public hearing? I'm going to close the public hearing, and Counselor Weaver, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill number 05-2022, an ordinance amending the Section 26-615 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning small cell CMRS facilities on second reading with the amendment to Code subsection 26-615.8.2 as recommended by staff, and that it take effect 15 days after publication.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I appreciate the addition of requiring that other locations are considered. I do know when it comes to engineering solutions, it's for precision, but within acceptable tolerance, there's usually other options available. So I think that's very forward-thinking of the city to help find, you know, locations that work better for everybody. So I'm grateful that that solution's coming forward, because I think that'll create more win-win situations for everybody. So just want to recognize everyone who contributed to that.
Thank you. Counselor Stites.
Thank you. Actually, I had kind of a similar comment as Ms. Hulteen. I think that I've gotten a few calls over the last couple of years as far as some of these, and I appreciate that, especially one of them, I think, was that they were about to build the cell tower right in front of her front window or something like that. So being able to move that onto the property line, I really appreciate the staff and everybody's hard work on that. So thank you.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We will go now to Agenda Item Number Five. Mayor Protem Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill number eight, 2022, an ordinance adopting a new Article Five of Chapter 15 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning chronic nuisance properties. At issue, on occasion, property owners or persons in charge of such properties have failed to take corrective action to abate certain nuisance conditions on that property. Chronic nuisance properties have a tremendous negative impact on the quality of life, safety, and health of the neighborhoods where they are located. This ordinance will adopt a new Article Five of Chapter 15 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to provide additional tools for the police department to address chronic nuisance properties.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Johnstone, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Well, we do, Mayor. Commander John Pickett is here for a staff report.
Okay. Commander Pickett.
Good evening, Council. As I'm sure you remember, I presented this to you earlier in a study session, so I won't go through the entire presentation, but basically address why the staff believes this is important to be enacted here in Wheat Ridge. Although these property issues don't come up frequently, when they do, the process takes a great deal of time to address, as our current ordinance is somewhat ambiguous and vague. At your direction, an ordinance has been drafted that is concise, the administrative enforcement of which is set up to be fair and equitable to both the property owners as well as the tenants. This new ordinance would assist the city in addressing these nuisances before they were able to create the lasting quality of life issues within the neighborhoods that we've seen in the past. And I'm available to answer questions about this, and I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Doll for more of the nuance on the actual ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Doll.
Just a couple of points. As the commander mentioned, this is an administrative enforcement mechanism, and it relies upon the city's administrative enforcement chapter, which is previously enacted and is used for a number of enforcement, a number of the chapters of the municipal code principally, including nuisances. And in fact, I think that's why the administrative enforcement process was originally enacted some 10 years ago. If I think it was five years ago, it was likely 10 years ago that that was enacted. And it was enacted for a specific purpose, because you would, we would get nuisance complaints, and the frustration really of the complaining party, usually a neighbor, that it went to municipal court and continuance were granted, or continuances were granted, and there's a change of counsel. And these are all protections that are afforded by the municipal court that we can't escape. But it does mean that there's real time that takes place. And the person complaining and just the general neighborhood expressed a real frustration that that was not a very streamlined, not a very effective process for dealing with that kind of concern in the neighborhood, rather than going to municipal court. It just seemed unhandy. And so the city, proactively, I think, put together an administrative enforcement procedure that relies on hearing officers. It's a much faster process, and that is the process that this additional code section relies upon, to funnel complaints that would be made about nuisance properties, funnel them then into the administrative hearing officers. Importantly, it does contain a provision that really encourages, though, conversation, if it's going to happen, between the chief of police and the property owner, to say, what's the plan for this? And as I think was probably expressed to you in study session, these are properties that have a number of things going on. It isn't just the one junk car. It isn't just the one roof that's in disrepair. It's a range of things. And sometimes people need to be assisted in putting together a game plan. So it really encourages that before we get to administrative enforcement, which I think is also a real positive way to address these kinds of problems. So it's administrative enforcement in the end to address a wider range of problems than our disorderly house ordinance is capable of addressing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We will, before we go to questions from council, go to comments from the public. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item, but if you're in council chambers and would like to speak, now is your opportunity. And if you're online, you may raise your hand in the virtual format, and we'll bring you into the meeting, but I see that no one has raised their hands. So we will move past our public comment on this item and go to questions from council. Mayor Protem Hulteen.
Thank you. Microphone on. Thank you for bringing this forward. This is something former council member Urban and I brought forward after a very concerning property in our district. I do have a question. I guess I need some clarification on the definition of chronic nuisance property. In this, it defines, it's defined as a parcel of real property on which activities have resulted in three nuisance violations against any individual or business within a 12-month period. It then goes on to give definitions with various numbers of violations relating to the number of parcels of real estate in a complex. And I'm actually just honestly a little bit confused by it. And so clarifying sort of why that definition gets drawn out like that and how that relates to, say, apartments versus condominium units. And then I have a follow-up question after some clarification.
Might rely on the commander of the chief to give a little more background on why there's sort of a layered approach here. On the face of it, the more complex the property or the more units, the more violations are required before the whole property can be declared a chronic nuisance property. Under the theory, I assume, and I want the chief or the commander to weigh in, under the theory that you've got more people there, and it should take a little bit more of a critical mass where you've got more units in a property rather than one single property owner, who ought to know better after three violations or three complaints, that that's something to be addressed. Does somebody add to that, Chief?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Doll. Mr. Doll's correct. Our thought process on that was very simply that these are scalable properties throughout Wheat Ridge, from single property owners to multiple units to apartment complexes, and we didn't want to hold an apartment complex to the same standard and catch them in a situation that we weren't anticipating an issue from. So this gives the apartment complex, which also may be owned by somebody who's conducting or who's operating in a manner that's at odds with the community values, but it gives us, it gives us leverage against that person, but at the right appropriate scale. So we anticipate that we may find people in violation in apartments, but if we do, we have to look at that on a scaled level. So that was the purpose, and we tried to, we tried to layer in such a way that we could differentiate between single property owners and people who had multiple dwellings or multiple spaces that they're operating. So that was the purpose of it.
Okay. Thank you. That intent definitely makes sense to me. I think I got confused reading it, because to me, it reads like, and I could be not reading the nuance of the language, but it reads like it's one unit, let's say it's a complex of five units, it's a five-unit apartment complex, that one unit within that has to get a certain number, or it's within all five units in 12 months if that, the building gets called on. Does that make sense? I don't know if I'm clarifying my question. Mondays are long days.
And the answer for that is that it depends. So what we're looking at is, there could be a situation where we have a complex with multifamily units. And due to the way the landlord is running the complex, it's causing a wide range of issues for the surrounding neighborhood. Or we could run into a problem where it's a single tenant within that unit, and we want to make sure that we're able to scale that to where if there's a single tenant that's being the problem, that we don't also hold the landlord or the others in that complex for what this one group is doing, if that makes sense.
That does make sense, and thank you for that explanation. Does the language differentiate between an apartment complex versus townhomes, where you have people who actually own their unit? And just when I read it for like, it's, you know, it's a parcel of real estate consisting of a complex of multiple individual residences, I just want to make sure we're being clear that that's apartments and not ownership of condominiums.
Yeah. I think we, I think we tried to specify that if you're, if you're an owner of a property, that that's one individual unit. But we also wanted to have, we were intentionally trying to be flexible in this section here so that we could, as the commander put it, really try and root out the source of the problem as opposed to getting other people caught up in an issue that wasn't there. So this ordinance really relies on myself or my designee to ultimately make a decision which is really, which really has a lot of guardrails put on it before we ever even get to administrative enforcement of these issues. But it allows us to look at this from the different angles. So it was important, just because we have so many different property types in Wheat Ridge, and we are heavily, we're a heavily rented community, and we're also growing in different types of housing, and we're seeing different types of housing, and we're just maybe, maybe we're a little bit outsmarting ourselves, but we're trying to look into the future and see what that means for us to enforce this type of thing.
Great. Thank you, Chief. I really appreciate thinking through all the nuances of this.
Thank you. Any additional questions from council? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Counselor Hulteen, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill number eight, 2022, an ordinance adopting a new Article Five of Chapter 15 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning chronic nuisance properties on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Dozeman. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll, oh, Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, this did come, this did come to this point because of a problem really not far from my house, and I've gotten to know a couple of the neighbors around that house. And first of all, the city did an outstanding job of responding to the neighbors' concerns and actually coming up with a collaborative and effective way of addressing the nuisance. And it's made a huge quality of life. I've gotten to know one of the neighbors pretty well, and, you know, I talked to her about all the great things that are going on in the city, and I'm always blah, blah, blah every time I talk to her. And she was like, you know, our entire experience with the city was dealing with this house for so long that we weren't paying attention to anything else going on in the city. And she said, since it's been taken care of, like, we, you know, we've stopped thinking about moving, and she's now on the cultural commission. And so being able to actually, like, address these properties really makes a significant impact, not just on the day-to-day quality of life by the neighbors, but like, the quality of like, our civic fabric. So I'm really grateful that this has come forward. I think it's a really thorough and well-thought-out approach, and again, it just demonstrates that we have a forward-thinking and very collaborative city staff and city departments, and I'm just grateful. And I know I have some neighbors that are going to be very glad when hopefully this passes tonight. Thank you.
Any additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Thank you. With that, we will go to Agenda Item Number Six. Counselor Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill number 07-2022, an ordinance adopting a new Article Five in Chapter 13 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning vehicular public nuisances. At issue, illegal street racing is a dangerous activity which poses a threat to those citizens using both public and private roadways. Negative impacts of street racing include excessive noise at late hours, taking over public property, dangerous stunts, and road racing that endangers the public as well as participation and, or participants and onlookers. The Wheat Ridge community has a low tolerance for this behavior. This proposed ordinance will create more tools for law enforcement to deter street racing.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading by the council. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Johnstone, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Yes. Commander Pickett is the point person on this as well.
Okay. Commander Pickett, you're up again.
Thank you, sir. Again, I won't bore you with going over what we've talked about in the past on this, but reiterate on why we believe that the staff, why this is necessary for the city of Wheat Ridge. Street racing is a metro-wide and even a nationwide problem currently. It poses physical dangers to the public as well as to the participant, street racing event, to the participants of the street racing. Street racing events and the stunts and the participants cause property damage to private property as well as to public roads and property. Just yesterday, in the metro area, there were two legal and several illegal street racing events within the metro area. There were six groups. There were six groups that met, two of them at car shows, the other four at illegal street racing events throughout the metro area. Of those four groups, they met in 17 different locations that went from Aurora all the way up to Boulder. And during those events, several things had happened. There were roads that were closed by the street racers to allow for racing. There were highways where they were racing on. There were two properties, two separate incidents, where large bonfires were lit in the middle of private parking lots. At that time, there was also times when they were doing donuts around these fires with young kids hanging out the windows of these cars. There were several eludees to the metro area that were specifically to do with these events last night. And I think it's fairly obvious what the dangers that come with these events are. Wheat Ridge is right in the center of the metro area, and we have several major thoroughfares, large parking lots, and a highway that goes through Wheat Ridge. This leaves us in a position where we are very susceptible to this behavior and have seen that in the past in Wheat Ridge. What we have relied on in the past is the model traffic code, the ordinances, and state laws to go after people individually for these actions. There are a lot of problems in our ability to actually catch street racers. They go at great efforts to conceal themselves, wearing masks, making sure that law enforcement can't get to them by shutting down the road by other street racers so you can't get to the actual racers. An ordinance that is currently in front of you allows us to go after the people that shut down the road to allow the street racing. It allows us to go after the vehicles and not just the drivers or the owners of the vehicles. This makes it a nuisance for that vehicle to be on the street and gives us that power to take that vehicle out of the equation. And as you can guess, the people that participate in these events really like their vehicles. So we feel that this is a very good way to deter the actual events in Wheat Ridge. But if they do occur, it will also give us some teeth to be able to put an end to that.
Thank you. Before I go to questions from Council, we will open this up to the public to comment on this item. I have no one signed up to speak, but once again, if you're here in City Hall, you may come and speak now, and we will ask for anyone on Zoom to raise their hand, and I don't see anyone there. So we will close that portion and go to any questions from Council. Any questions before I close the public hearing? I see none. I'm going to close the public hearing. And Counselor Stites, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 07-2022, An Ordnance Adopting a New Article 5 in Chapter 13 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Vehicular Public Nuisances on Second Reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hutchinson. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to staff and our police department for bringing this forth. Much like Councilmember Hulteen with the former motion, we, my neighborhood, has had lots of problems with street racing. In fact, a couple of summers ago, we had some, several blocks within our neighborhood shut down completely, many of the parking lots, of businesses around. We had to pull resources from multiple jurisdictions to address the issue. I get lots of calls from residents regarding street racing on I-70. I can hear it from my house going on. So I really appreciate you bringing this forth and allowing us to have some teeth to address this. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Counselor Nosler Beck.
Thanks. And I just wanted to also share that, you know, this is also hopefully another reason for folks to pay attention to sticking to our speed limits and maybe even going under them, especially when we have these severe weather events like we had last weekend. At the corner of 44th and Everett, there was a really severe accident where, I have a crazy picture, but at the end of our street on Saturday morning, there was a car that had ended up on the sidewalk. And I talked to one of the police officers who was there, and they had said that they had potentially hydroplaned or had gotten cut off by someone else. And so I realize this ordinance is for these larger events, and it's also an opportunity for us to just be really mindful of, it doesn't necessarily mean you're on the highway when you're going that fast. Really intense accidents can happen on any of our streets.
Thank you. Additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the Council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item Number 7. Counselor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you. Motion to approve the receipt of an in-kind donation from CTP Disc LLC to construct a disc golf course at Fruitdale Park and allow naming rights of the course for a limited three-year term. At issue, closest to the Penn, CTP wishes to provide a donation valued at $12,000 to construct a disc golf course at Fruitdale Park. The city currently does not provide amenities for disc golf play. CTP has designed a course and will manage and coordinate the construction project. The city has provided specifications for construction, and inspections would be conducted by city staff to ensure quality construction and compliance with standards. CTP wishes to have rights to name the course with the name of their organization. Under this agreement and with the recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission, the city will allow naming of the course for three years. Approval of a two-thirds majority of city council is required to approve the naming of a Parks and Recreation Park or facility.
Thank you very much. This will be a motion by the Council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Johnstone, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Yes, Karen O'Donnell, our Parks and Recreation Director, is here.
Okay, Director O'Donnell.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of Council. Before I go into this, I do want to mention that Mr. Dahl and I spoke last night, and he asked me to just adjust the motion a little bit by adding the language after the end of it to say, "And in connection therewith, approve the facility donation agreement with CTP Disc LLC and authorize execution of the same." So essentially, we were asking to accept the in-kind donation and approve the naming rights, but then this is just adding the approval of the actual agreement, which is also in your packet. So just to give a little bit of background, we, our department was approached by a gentleman named Barry Jennings, where he's the co-owner of CTP Disc LLC probably about a year ago. And we were discussing various locations where we might be able to put a disc golf course because he offered it as an in-kind donation, which of course was great because we always love recreational amenities in the community, especially those that we don't have. And it's always wonderful when we don't have to pay for them. So we were definitely working with Barry, and we determined that Fruitdale had the best space. And one of the reasons why Fruitdale was a great location is because we've kind of been struggling to activate that space and wanting to do that to provide additional safety at Fruitdale Park. So we thought it was a great opportunity, and you'll see in your packet, there's a layout that really essentially puts the course on the perimeter of Fruitdale Park. And one of the things that I want to note is that there were some questions that came up in the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission meeting related to, you know, will these discs go into the playground and into the dog park and things like that? So we are going to do a thorough review of the course design just to make sure it's the best that it can be before we actually build it. But also that if at any point any of these become a problem, we can certainly move or modify the tees. So additionally, we can put up sports netting if we need to, which is relatively inexpensive to do as well. So we do have some options if it ends up creating some issues. This was discussed during the Let's Talk program with the Fruitdale neighborhood, and 64% of the 49 individuals that participated either strongly supported or supported, and beyond that, it was 22% that were neutral. So not a lot of people that didn't want a disc golf course in Fruitdale. So we drafted an agreement including three-year naming rights based on calculations of value of the in-kind donation. So after three years, the city will have exclusive rights to call the disc golf course whatever we'd like to. We will be responsible for operations and maintenance of the facility. And then, looking at the naming policy, which was also attached in your packet, the name, the CTP Disc Golf naming, needed to go to the Parks and Recreation Commission and needed to receive a two-thirds vote. It was a unanimous vote of the commission, but then the next step is to come to city council and also receive a two-thirds vote to move forward. So that is where we're at. And if you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Before we go to questions from Council, I want to open this up for members of the public to speak on this. I have one person signed up to speak on this. Cambria Rollo. If you'd like to speak, please come and introduce yourself. Give us your first name, your last name, and spell your last name and give us an address. And you may then continue.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Cambria Rollo, last name spelled R-O-L-L-O. I live at 6761 West 36th Place here in Wheat Ridge, and I'm also the Parks and Recreation Commission Chair. So on behalf of the commission, I just wanted you to know that we are here in support of accepting this in-kind donation from one of our Wheat Ridge businesses. So this is a great hand-in-hand with our Parks and Recreation Department and a local business in terms of supplying another resource in our parks and something that's just not here yet. And so I think there's a lot of people, including my neighbor who I was just talking to last night, who's super excited about the fact that we're going to have a disc golf course hopefully here in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's anyone else in the public who'd like to speak on this, you may do so now. I'll see if we have anyone online with their hand up.
Mayor, do we have Pat Severa? Pat, you should be unmuted on my end.
Okay, Pat, if you'd please introduce yourself and give us your address, then you may speak to the Council.
Yes, it's Pat Severa, C-E-R-V-E-R-A. I live at 10721 West 45th Avenue. I am also a member of the Wheat Ridge Park and Recreation Commission, and Fruitdale is my neighborhood park. So I wanted to just voice my approval of this donation and the naming rights. We've had good discussion in the commission meeting and voiced our concerns, and those have been met, so I would ask for approval of this.
Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak tonight?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now turn to questions from Council. Ms. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. The first question I have is, could the naming rights continue after the three-year to another entity besides the city?
It could. We could look at sponsorship options if we'd like, for sure.
Okay. And then, are there any other opportunity, naming right opportunities for anything park-related in the past or something similar to what this is?
I would say, nothing has happened in my time here, but we do have the policy in place just for that reason, because various parks have been named for a variety of different reasons. So that's why the policy was created. We do have the fitness court opening if we wanted to name that something. There's a possibility there, and, you know, there'll always be additional options as things arise.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just, I guess I'm all about clarification tonight. So we're really not renaming the park, we're just naming the facility within the park, right? The element of the park, okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, even with, in going through this process, I had to check with Mr. Dahl if this was actually something we'd need to utilize the naming policy for, because it's not a park and it's, I wouldn't necessarily call it a facility, it's an amenity within the park, but we consider it legally a facility to name.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Manwearing Park changed its name to Creekside, right? Isn't that what it's called now?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we still have Manwearing Field.
Correct.
At Creekside Park.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I can't leave a discussion on Fruitdale Park go without saying that I was really pleased to have my company build that park many, many, many years ago. So that's a special part in my heart, a part in my heart. Okay. So if there's no more discussion, let's see, we've had a motion. Have we had a motion on this or? No, okay, well, listen, why don't we, Ms. Dozeman, an emotion is ripe at this time.
I move to approve the receipt of an in-kind donation from CTP Disc LLC to construct a disc golf course and allow naming rights of the course for a limited three-year term, and in connection therewith, approve the facility donation agreement with CTP Disc LLC and authorize execution of the same.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Nosler Beck. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank the two Parks and Recreation Commissioners, first for serving on that commission, and secondly, for coming and speaking with us tonight. It's always really nice to hear from you guys, and I know you do good service to our city, and just wanted to specifically thank both of you for that. And I just think this is really exciting, and I have a neighbor who's also very excited about this. And I, you know, I think it's exciting for us to be able to do partnerships like this and to activate parks in really constructive ways. So I cannot throw a frisbee to save my life, and you are some, I'm somebody you don't want doing that because I will be hitting the kids on the playground. So I probably won't be using it, but I have a neighbor who is very eager, and I'm just curious what the timeline is. I should have asked that under questions, but my neighbor probably will ask me tomorrow.
I don't actually know. I think we just needed to formalize the agreement, but I think it's a relatively quick turnaround. So I will keep you posted.
All right. Godspeed, Parks and Recs and the discourse.
Additional discussion on the motion? Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was also going to ask for the timeline, but I am very excited for this. Disc golf, also known as frisbee golf, is actually pretty fun. It is quite challenging, but it's a great new amenity for our parks. So I wanted to thank Parks and Rec Director Karen O'Donnell and the Parks and Rec Commissioners also for serving and for supporting this. So I think this is, this will be wonderful for our community and a great use in that park as well.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
I'd just like to echo what my other council members have already said, and I'm definitely in support of this. This is a unique opportunity for a partnership with the business in Wheat Ridge, so I think that kind of makes it extra special. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the Council?
Motion is unanimous, seven to zero.
Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number 8. Counselor Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 26-2022, a resolution of denial of Council Bill 02-2022, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property at 7585 West 32nd Avenue from restricted commercial RC to planned residential development PRD. At issue, this resolution creates a record of denial of the application of Hartwood LLC for a zone change from restricted commercial RC to planned residential development PRD for property located at 7585 West 32nd Avenue.
Thank you. This is a resolution to the Council. It is quasi-judicial. Mr. Johnstone, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Yes, City Attorney Jerry Dahl.
Mr. Dahl.
Thank you very much, Council. I appreciate Council taking this up at my request from your previous meeting. As the Council should know, the hearing on this matter, of course, has been closed. It was closed at the last meeting, so no additional testimony. You certainly can get legal advice from me, which you're, what you're getting right now, but you're still in action mode, just as you were at the end of the hearings. This is really just a continuation of that part of the hearing where you're really just taking action. As you're well aware, this particular rezoning application required six votes for approval because there had been certified a proper protest. It did not achieve those six votes, and so the motion to approve the rezoning failed. But as I've indicated on the second page of the staff report- But as I've indicated on the second page of the staff report, the code section that governs private rezoning requires the council to do one of three things: approve the zoning, deny the zoning, approve it with conditions. And a failed motion to approve is no action and does not achieve one of those three things. And that is why I asked for a motion for denial, which also included the language about creating a resolution, and which I have done here, and this creates that record. Going forward, I'll make certain that the motion language for matters such as this is clear so that it's easier for you to, to take up at the time rather than having to do this, and I appreciate your indulgence. I also appreciate the time I've spent with the mayor to talk through, just logistically, how we make certain that the, the code is applied and we follow the code, but that we don't create a lot of procedural confusion for people, and we'll certainly do that. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council on this item? Counselor Ohm?
Yeah, I'm a little, the one question I have is that I understand that it got denied the first time, but then there was a motion to deny it, and it was four-four with the deciding vote being the mayor, so that my understanding was that it, it was a five-vote denying it, so if you could explain that?
Sure. Actually, the first motion was not to deny.
No, that, no, the first motion was to approve. It was the second. The second was to deny.
That's correct. First motion failed. The motion to deny passed, and a motion to deny certainly doesn't, doesn't need the five votes, or excuse me, the six votes, you only need.
Right.
You only need five. It passed, and it carried with it the direction to me to prepare this resolution. So maybe, can you elaborate on your question, or did I cover it?
I'll let somebody else ask some questions.
If I, if I could just add, maybe, the motion that I think was made by Ms. Counselwoman Weaver included the direction to come back with a, with a resolution of denial at the next city council meeting. So in passing that, five to four with the mayor's vote, this was what you told us to
Counselor Stites.
Maybe this is a silly question, maybe it's a Robert Rules question. Would it have been better to do a substitute motion rather than denying the one that we did? Would that have made it clearer or easier to the matter?
Not necessarily. That, that has come up over time, and that's a, and we'll call it a technique, but that's an option that's always available to council when they, you know, you look around and decide which motion you'd rather have voted on first. That would have been something that could have been interposed. It wasn't. For my way of thinking, sometimes it's, it's almost easier to say, is this going to get approved? It didn't get approved. Let's tie it off, take the next motion, which we're required to do under the code, and take one of those other two actions that, we've got to pick one of the three. The first one didn't happen, so let's try the next one. That, to me, I think is maybe a little more straight up. I think it's probably also less confusing for the public when it's done that way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any additional questions? Okay. Counselor Hutchinson, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution Number 26-2022, a resolution of denial of Council Bill 02-2022, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property at 7585 West 32nd Avenue from restricted commercial RC to planned residential development PRD.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Nine. Counselor Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Resolution Number 27-2022, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2022 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $500,000 and approving an agreement with Family Tree for housing navigation assistance and case management services. At issue, per City Council's direction, the city will contribute funds to support nonprofit organizations whose demand for services has increased due to the COVID-19 pandemic, using increased general fund reserves from American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding. Consensus was received by City Council to contribute $500,000 to Family Tree to assist the city with housing navigation and assisting, assistance and case management services for those persons experiencing homelessness or at threat of becoming homeless.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial in nature. Mr. Johnstone, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Mary Ann Shilling from the City Manager's Office is available on the Zoom call.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So this agreement and, and budget supplemental are tied both closely to Council Bill 182021 as well as the direction provided by the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA. The Council Bill 182021, as you may recall, it created a licensing program for hotels that required certain amenities to provide safe and healthy environments for, for persons that are staying in Wheat Ridge. And the extended stay portion of this ordinance goes into effect in September, which means that long-term guests can no longer stay in a hotel for longer than 29 days in a row if that hotel does not have an extended stay license, and at this time, there are no hotels that have applied for an extended stay license. So with that being the case, you know, we do know that there are individuals and households that are long-term residents of our hotels, and we understand that this ordinance does affect one's ability to stay in hotels for longer than 29 days in a row. And so really to, in order to address the impact of this ordinance, we've worked really closely with Family Tree to develop a plan to help provide really robust support and to help transition individuals who are staying in these hotels into stable and secure housing. So you may also remember during the April 4th study session regarding the ARPA-related funding allocations, that City Council provided consensus to move forward with funding for fiscal year 2022, and those funds do include $500,000 for a one-year partnership with Family Tree, and that will specifically address our extended stay guests at Wheat Ridge, and it is aligned with the ARPA funding direction regarding what they've called assistance to households and homelessness and housing initiatives. So this $500,000 agreement, it includes housing navigation services, rent, security deposit assistance, as well as four to six months of case management services for staffing. It includes a full-time case manager as well as a half-time housing navigator through Family Tree. So with this budget supplemental request, we're anticipating that in total, these funds and the scope of work will be able to support about 75 households, and the entire scope of work, if you're interested, is included in your packet. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the budget supplemental, the request, as well as the agreement with Family Tree. And then, as you can see, we also have Scott Shields, the CEO of Family Tree, on the line as well, and we are both available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, I'd like to open this up to the public. I have no one signed up to speak on this item, but if you're here in council chambers and would like to speak, you may do so now. And I will, if you are online and would like to speak on this, please raise your hand in the virtual format, and we'll bring you into the meeting. And I understand that we have no one that's raised their hand or come in to speak, so we'll move on to questions from council. Any, any questions from council on this? Looks like we do not, so then we will, a motion is in order. Counselor Nosler Beck.
I move to approve Resolution Number 27-2022, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2022 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $500,000 and approving an agreement with Family Tree for housing navigation assistance and case management services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Dozeman. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just am grateful for our partnership with Family Tree, and I expressed this a couple weeks ago, but I'm just really proud of our city and this council for using these funds for this purpose. I think it shows the quality of care we have and, and the accountability and responsibility we take for our policy decisions too as a council body. So I am very proud to be supporting this, and I thank you, Family Tree, for doing good work in our community.
Any additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Thank you very much. That takes us to the end of our regular agenda items, and when we get to that point in the meeting, we will go to City Managers Matters. Mr. Johnstone?
I do have one item. The, in response to last week's snow event, we did set up the, the tree branch drop-off site at Anderson Park, and that remains open for a couple more days, and I'm going to lean on Karen to give you the details of what's allowed and what the hours are.
Okay. Director O'Donnell?
Thank you. So it will be open tomorrow from 8:00 to 3:00, and Wednesday from 8:00 until noon. We do allow personal trailers, but not to exceed about five-by-eight trailers. We don't want large commercial vehicles coming in. No lawn debris, stumps, or logs. Branches must be six inches in diameter or less. Do not leave limbs after the event ends or beyond designated drop-off sites, and we are checking IDs for Wheat Ridge residency. So we did have a bit of an issue on Sunday with all kinds of rules being broken and people leaving couches and paint and whatnot, so we are trying to reel that in.
Great. Well, thank you very much. That's a, that's a great benefit to our, to our residents. I, I had several telephone calls about how they might process their, their branches, and actually, I showed up there today just about 10 minutes after 3:00 and was very politely known that it, that it was closed at 3:00, but it'd be open tomorrow, so I'm looking forward to coming tomorrow. So thank you very much. Anything further, Mr. Johnstone?
That's it for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dahl?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, thanks so much. We will go to elected officials matters, and let's see, our clerk, our, anything from our clerk's office, Mr. Eaton?
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll start with Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. About the paint, I was wondering, Saturday, wasn't there supposed to be a paint drop-off with the Sustainability Committee? Maybe they got that mixed up or something? I had it on my calendar, I don't know. But anyway, I am very grateful that this council chamber is warm tonight. Thank you very much. I was one of probably 1,000 or so people who did not have electric or heat for 31 hours and was wearing gloves in my house, and so I really do appreciate heat. And anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Nosler Beck?
I just wanted to thank everybody for pitching, and there were a lot of neighbors coming out to help folks with moving tree limbs and lots of staff out and about. It was a really, it was a really big event that our community experienced over the weekend with the snow. And it was also a real shock to a lot of the, you know, kids and, and folks who are going to school and the educators, they all had planned events for celebrating the end of the school year, and everything had to quick adjust. And so, once again, I just want to say, for a lot of those who are in Jeffco Public Schools, last day is for my kid's school tomorrow, but some on Wednesday, thank you so much for, just to both the students and the teachers, for really pulling off an incredibly huge feat of this school year. We got through COVID and the unpredictability of it, and we're just a really resilient community, so just a special shout-out. And I guess the last thing I'll say is, if you know of anybody who'd like to be a lifeguard, I really, really, really want Anderson Pool to be open for a full eight hours or however many hours, makes it so that people can swim in the mornings and the afternoon, so please apply. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank the city staff and the Parks and Rec Department. Before I was getting calls, they already had the Anderson Park thing set up the other day, so that's, that's pretty phenomenal, and the fact that you're extending it another couple days, that's, that's great. I've gotten nothing but glowing compliments from my neighbors and, and other people in the city about, about that, so thank you guys for what you've done down there. I also want to reiterate what Ms. Nosler Beck said. Thank you to all the teachers, educators, everybody. I've had the opportunity to go to close to 20 schools this year and, and work with them in, in partnership, and it's, it's been an amazing year watching teachers and administrators work through all the different challenges that have come up, and, and they've done a phenomenal job, so thank you to them, thank you to the parents and the students who've done a great job. I had the opportunity to go today to a ribbon cutting at Aim High Chiropractic, or I guess a re-grand opening since COVID. COVID was very hard on, on personal service businesses like, like chiropractic, so it's good to have them back in the community. Mr. Ohm and the mayor were there, along with members of the chamber and local, or not local works, the Business Association, all did phenomenal. So while I'm talking about businesses, we've got Memorial Day weekend coming up, so if you're looking for barbecues or anything like that, try to find it in Wheat Ridge. If you can find it, find it and buy it here.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a few items. I wanted to extend my kudos to staff. You really jumped on the ball to get things moving and set up a drop-off site for limbs. I want to say that it was probably the first of many of the surrounding communities, so I'm really grateful to you for, for just, you know, being, being so wonderful and, and being on the ball. Another ribbon cutting is scheduled for tomorrow. It's the Willie Bean Ribbon Cutting. It's a pedal cab coffee cart actually owned by Jenny Snell, who accepted the LGBTQ plus proclamation this evening. It's at 9:30 tomorrow morning, 7230 West 38th Avenue, so it's the visitor's center, and it'll be in the back parking lot, so come and join us for that ribbon cutting. I also wanted to say happy summer and remind anybody with kiddos that the Zope Italian Family Circus is having a circus camp the week before the Carnation Festival, and you can sign kiddos up at zope.net. I believe the early bird special has already ended, but they offer really great deals, and my kids are very excited for the unique opportunity. So happy summer, everybody, and happy Memorial Day. Please remember all of those that gave and sacrificed their all to ensure that we are free. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver? Nothing, nothing?
Yes, I am Counselor Weaver. I have nothing tonight.
Thank you, so, thank you so much. I'm glad I got the name right. Counselor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I attended the, the Crime Victims Service Bill signing with Governor Polis and Representative Duran at Porchlight with other council members from Lakewood and county commissioners. And then, I got an email from a constituent in District Two, and they, they wanted to say that they think everybody in City Council, the mayor, and the staff is doing a great job, so thank you for that.
Well, thanks. Mayor Protem Holtein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been, I love the shout-outs we're getting tonight. It's so nice. I, like everyone else, I just want to recognize our Parks and Rec Department and all of staff who worked to make sure as a city we were able to be responsive to our community's needs. Saturday morning was pretty shocking in our neighborhood. I was up a lot Friday night trying to save two of my little, my little tree, my little baby trees, and I did. And by the time I woke up on Saturday, I had neighbors who dragged, I'd lost several huge branches, and they dragged them out of the right of way to make sure they weren't a nuisance, and I came home from work today and everything had been chopped up and dragged off. I don't even know who did it, but that's what makes Wheat Ridge great. But I also, really, today driving around, I mean, it was, it's heartbreaking, and I also just want to recognize our Parks and Recreation is cleaning up our trees, our city's trees, and I've been able to really see the damage to our community's trees and our parks, and it's, it's hard. I mean, we're a tree city, and so I know that our Parks and Recreation staff is also tending to our city's trees as well, and I know that that's a lot of, a lot of work, so you guys are working overtime, and it's, it's really appreciated quite a bit. So with that, the other thing, I, I'm not always really great about sharing, but you know, I'm, I'm privileged to be the council liaison for sustainable Wheat Ridge, and we had our meeting last week, and I just, I think everyone knows this, they just accomplish so much for our city and have such great passion and capacity and vision and are doing incredible work, and I just, it's amazing to sit with them for two hours and all the things that they plan and cover, and they're really looking to share it, you know, what are they plan and cover, and they're really looking to share it. You know, what are some, some things that they can do to help support, you know, policies, as well as the great programming that they're doing. So they're, they're setting some priorities, and I'm looking forward to, to talking with my peers about those. And I just really want to recognize Sustainable Wheat Ridge for their passion, and I know we have been without a coordinator for a little bit, and looking forward to having a new one on staff so that we can, we can take up that mantle a little bit more. So anyway, just want to thank everyone for their service, and maybe we have an uneventful couple of weeks in our city. We'd welcome that.
Thank you. I had the, the honor and the privilege to attend our city's Employee Recognition Awards last Saturday morning. It was a Zoom format, and I want to thank the city staff for putting together, and the awards committee putting together, really wonderful presentation. I want to recognize all the winners, but more importantly, I want to recognize all of the staff and the employees that work in our city. I think we've got a great city staff, and the employees that we, that we have working, working on behalf of our citizens do a great job and really deliver great results. So thank you all very much. I had a, our, our city clerk has been, has not been with us for, for a number of weeks. He has been ill. He sent me a message today and asked me to read it. So on behalf of our clerk, Steve Kirkpatrick, I'd like to read this to you all. "Thank you all who have expressed your concerns and well wishes as my family, and we recover from COVID. Following the advice of my healthcare providers and people I know who have had COVID, including some here in the chambers this evening, I am allowing more time to convalesce and recover. We were exposed three weeks ago now and are still dealing with this virus. We also want to pass along something we learned early in our struggles with COVID during the first week of May. Among the five seniors who are in our little bubble, we had a collective, a total of more than 10 negative home tests for COVID before the first one of us tested positive. The key discovery is that, is that newly exposed people are asymptomatic but highly contagious for at least 48 to 72 hours after exposure to Omicron. The home tests return a high percentage of false negative tests during that critical window of time. However, the PCR tests we can get at pharmacies and public health testing sites will return true positive tests during those hours. Personally, about 7:00 AM on May 5th, I tested negative for the fourth time in four days using a home test, even though I had been symptomatic for two days by then. At 11:45 AM that same morning, just four hours later, I took a PCR test at a pharmacy, and it was positive. So if you feel poorly or have the well-known symptoms of COVID, do not rely on the home testing kits. If that result is negative, get a PCR test. You might also want to carefully reconsider where and when you choose to wear masks, which remain our best personal defense against Omicron variants. Our friends who passed it to us had just flown from Miami to Denver three days before we fell ill, just after masks are no longer mandatory on airplanes. Omicron is currently avoidable if you spend time indoors with a few people and one of them is unaware that they are contagious. On a happier note, I want to wish my bride a happy anniversary. Today Kathy and I have been married for 35 years. Congratulations. God bless you all and keep you all." So thank you, Clerk Kirkpatrick, for that memo, and we wish you well and hope you are able to join us soon. Also, on Friday, it was my pleasure to, to join our city staff here in council chambers to say goodbye to Sarah Spalding. Sarah's been our, our Public Information Officer for a number of years now. She came in and did just wonderful service with our city. She's now going to be, I believe, the chief spokeswoman for the city of Grand Junction over in the Western Slough. So I want to thank her for her service and wish her well going forward. As you've heard, school's out, so I want everyone to be, to be watching for, for little youngsters who are out and about getting great exercise. I want to remind us that we are all teachers, and if we're able to interact with young people, let's pass on some of the skills that we've acquired to get this far in our life. If there's no more business to come before council, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.